Thursday, October 20th, Cookeville City Council Meeting to Order. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Baji?
Here.
Councilman Walker?
Here.
Mayor Weath?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eldridge?
Here.
Councilman Gilbert?
Here.
By present.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask those who wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Pastor Chris McMichael of Engraved Word Church to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we come to you tonight in the name of Jesus, and we thank you for our city. We thank you for our city leaders and the council members. We ask you, Father, for your wisdom upon this council for decision-making. Your word says righteousness will exalt a nation, and we know that it will exalt our city. We thank you, Father, for the safety, protection you provide for us. We thank you, Father, for your hand upon our city and our region. In Jesus' name, amen.
Item 3, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes? Is there a motion?
Move it through.
There. Second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote. Item 3, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes? Is there a motion?
Move it through.
There. Second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. For A, recognition of wastewater treatment plant for receiving the Operational Excellence Award. Mr. Turner.
Mayor, members of the council, earlier this year at the Kentucky-Tennessee Water Professionals Conference in Lexington, Kentucky, the city was awarded Operational Excellence Award by the Clean Water Professionals of Kentucky and Tennessee. I want to read the wording that's on that plaque. It says Operational Excellence Award is hereby given to the City of Cookeville for continued outstanding operation of the Cookeville Wastewater Treatment Plant. This award is conferred to recognize the dedication, resolve, and outstanding effort of employees of this facility by having no more than one violation of its MPDS permit limits during the annual reporting period. An MPDS permit's a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, and of the more than 250 permit holders in Tennessee, only 15 received the award for 2021. We did not have any excellent violations in 2021, and this is the 10th year in a row that we've received the award. This is John Buford. He's here. Come on up here, John. This is him receiving the award. Peyton Stone, he's the superintendent, and Peyton Stone Metz is the assistant superintendent. This here is a picture of all the employees at the plant, and I'll read their names. John Buford there on the left, and Spencer Mates, Ronnie Ombarder, Ethan Leonard, Tim Henry, Chris Cavan, Matt Brown, and Peyton Stone Metz. I want to recognize the employees of the wastewater treatment plant for the work and dedication in earning this award, and I hope you'll join me in thanking them for the continued outstanding operation at the wastewater treatment plant.
John will say his word to the ladies.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for your time. I just appreciate Barry for putting this in the agenda tonight, and I told, I asked him personally, you know, if it would be okay. We addressed, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and my entire city. On behalf of me, you know, at the wastewater plant, I want to greatly appreciate, you know, we didn't just get this award. Y'all enabled this award. You know, we travel around, and we get to see other plants and places, and the resounding thing that we get from other places is you must have good support structure throughout the city. So I would like to personally thank everybody on the city council, city management, you know, I said, all the way up, you know, for the support that you give us and allowing us to do things that we do very well. Thank you for your time.
Any comments from the council? Congratulations.
Thank you.
5A, old business, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on September 15th, 2022. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 5B, consider on second and final reading ordinance 022-0819, amendment to the Future Land Use Concept Plan of the Cookeville 2030 Plan to depict an area located north of Benny Drive from being classified as suited for commercial plan development to being appropriate for lower-density residential. Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This is consideration on second and final reading. There have been no changes to the ordinance. It's approved on first reading, and we've had no calls or comments. Ask for approval on second and final reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you for the consent agenda. 6A, consider awarding bids for LED lights. Consider approval of pricing adjustment on transformer bid approved by the city council on August 19th, 2021. 6C, consider, excuse me, set a date 11/3/22 for a public hearing on ordinance 022-1021, rezoning property located at 4, 8, 10, 16, and 18, West Spring Street, tax map 053G, group J, parcels 001.00, 002.00, 002.01, and 005.01, from CL Local Commercial to CBD Central Business District. 6D, set a date 11/3/22 for a public hearing on ordinance 022-1022, rezoning property located at 116 and 130 North Hickory Avenue and 169 and 175 Montgomery Avenue from MS Medical Service to CL Local Commercial, an establishment of an REO district for same. And 6E, set a date 11/3/22 for a public hearing on ordinance 022-1023, amending the zoning code for the addition of an RS 7.5 zoning district. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
There. Second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7A, consider authorizing Waller-Lanston-Dorch-Davis LLP as bond counselors for the proposed insurance, excuse me, issuance of not to exceed $10 million general obligation bond. Ms. Emel.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, this item and the next three items on the agenda all relate to a proposed not-to-exceed $10 million general obligation bond issue. The bond is being issued to continue the 10th Street Phase 2 and the West Stevens Street Phase 1 road projects, as well as reimburse the general firm for the property purchased off of 111. This first item is the engagement of bond counsel for the issue. Waller-Lanston-Dorch-Davis is a firm out of Nashville. Alex Buchanan with them has done numerous of our bond issues over the last few years. He will provide a bond opinion regarding validity and security of the bonds, including the source of repayment, security of the bonds, and exclusibility of interest on the bonds from gross income for federal and state income tax purposes. He'll prepare a lot of the documents, coordinate authorization and execution of the documents. His fee, which will be paid from the proceeds of the bond, will be $15,250, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There. Second? Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
7B, consider authorizing Cumberland Securities as a municipal advisor for the proposed issuance of not-to-exceed $10 million general obligations bond. Ms. Emel.
Council members, Cumberland Securities Company out of Knoxville has acted as our municipal provider since probably 2015 on all of our bonds. They will prepare and publish the official notices, coordinate and deliver all the documents, and they will actually advertise and manage the bid process, and they will evaluate all the bids and determine the most favorable bid for the city. Their fee for the, for their work will be $29,985, and again, that would be part of the bond issue cost. Additional bond issue costs will be about $10,000 for them preparing the official notice of sale, the preliminary and final offering statements, and other miscellaneous expense. $700 will be for the trustee, which is US Bank. And then we will use Moody's to rate our bonds before we go to market, and their fee is estimated to be $19,000. So total bond issue cost between the last agenda item and this agenda item is about $75,000, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7C, consider resolution R22-0719, initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not-to-exceed $10 million in general bonds of Cookeville. Ms. Emel.
Yes, this initial resolution is for us to issue not-to-exceed $10 million in general obligation bonds. The planned budget or projects for the bond proceeds are to purchase real property for the preservation of open space park improvements of $3,285,000. The planning, design, engineering, construction of street improvements to include East 10th Street Phase 2 and West Stevens Street, $6,440,000. We've got a contingency there of $200,000, and again, estimated bond issue cost is $75,000. Our total bonds outstanding, general obligation bonds outstanding are $24,185,000. This would be $10 million on top of that, and we have the debt capacity to cover that, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7D, consider resolution R22-0720, detailed resolution authorizing the issuance of not-to-exceed $10 million in general obligation bonds of Cookeville. Ms. Emel.
Council members, this is a detailed resolution. It is many more pages, and it has a lot more information related to the bonds. It provides the definitions. It authorizes the mayor to provide, to sign all the documents for the bonds, sets forth redemption and maturity dates and other provisions required for compliance with regulations and laws, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion?
Mayor, if I could, we discussed Monday that possibly looking at additional bond indebtedness, and we decided the $10 million is what we would do now, but I just wanted to state for you and for the public that depending on what these projects come back at bid price, it's likely that we would do an additional bond issue sometime after the first of the year.
Any further discussion? Okay, all vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7A, consider approval of basic life insurance plan for city employees. Ms. Emel.
Council members, a benefit the city offers to our active employees is city-paid life insurance. Lincoln Financial has been the carrier of this coverage since January 1st of 2020. McGriff Insurance, our employee benefits broker, shop this benefit with other carriers and receive six quotes in addition to the Lincoln renewal quote. All quotes were increases over the current coverage, with Lincoln's renewal quote actually being over a 90% increase. AD&amp;D independent rates were the same for all quotes with no changes from our current rates. The best quote in our recommendation is to accept the quote from the Hartford. Their quote is 46.6 cents per thousand dollars of coverage for active employees, which is about an 8.6% increase over the current rate of 42.9 cents. And their quote for retiree coverage is 66.5 cents per thousand, which is an 8.7% increase over the current rate of 61.2 cents. Currently, when an employee retires, they are eligible to remain on the group plan, but they pay the premiums for that coverage. The AD&amp;D independent rates remain the same at 20.02, two and a half cents, and 62.5 cents respectively. The Hartford is also providing us a three-year rate guarantee with their quote. The rate increase is estimated to be annually approximately $6,156 cost for the city and about $1,404 for the retirees. We currently use Hartford for other voluntary benefits and for our employees, and they have been good to work with, and I would recommend accepting the quote for life insurance coverage effective January 1st, 2023 from the Hartford. Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Emel.
Thank you.
7F, consider approval of contract to purchase property from the Bryce Rice Estate located off Stewart Cemetery Road and authorize the city manager to proceed with the purchase.
Mayor, council members, Mr. Gary Dyer, who's the executive for the Bryce Rice Estate, approached the city about purchasing a piece of property from the estate that's located off Cemetery Road, and it's in the Highlands Business Park, and you can see on the screen the area, the rectangle in red is the piece of property. It's identified as parcel 3101 on tax map 64, and it consists of approximately 8,500 square feet. Its adjacent, as you can see by property, it says Putnam County, and it's the city of Cookeville and Putnam County own that jointly. The purchase price that was negotiated here by Mr. Ward, who's done a fantastic job on this, is $6,000. If you do approve the purchase, it would be jointly purchased by the city and the county. The county commission did approve purchasing and paying for their half of it on Monday night. The property would be incorporated into the large tract there, tract one that you're seeing that's owned by the city and county. What's most attractive here for us for this, to the reason to acquire, as you can see on this map, there are several easements that cross our tract to get to this piece. Some of y'all that have been around for a while may remember this is where the Rice Motor Inn billboard used to be located, and that's why that tract was created. But again, this was approved by the county commission Monday night. I would request your approval of the contract and authorization to purchase the property that costed $3,000, or one-half the total cost of $6,000.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7G, consider approval of one-year contract extension with Retail Strategies for Retail Development, Marketing, and Consulting Services. Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. The community development department requests council approval to renew a professional services contract with consulting firm Retail Strategies. Retail Strategies provides consulting services and retail recruitment, retail-related research, and market real estate analysis. The city of Cookeville has contracted with the firm since 2014, so for nine years now. The contract renewal would continue these services through August 11th, 2023. The cost of the renewal is $25,000. This is a budgeted item, and I request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7H, consider awarding bid for commercial mowers. Mr. Woods.
Thank you, the mayor and members of the council. We advertise and receive bids for commercial-grade mowers, three commercial-grade mowers. We received bids from two different companies, and I'm recommending that we purchase three mowers from Southern Landscape Supply, the bad boy brand mowers, at total cost with the option, option number one, at a total cost of $27,078.90, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7I, consider approval to purchase sanitation dumpsters utilizing the Sourcewell purchasing contract. Mr. Mayo?
Thank you, Mayor, council. We'd like to purchase 18 eight-yard dumpsters and two 30-yard roll-off dumpsters from a Sourcewell purchasing contract. The vendor is Waste Quip. The price for each eight-yard dumpster is $1,331 each, and the roll-offs are $6,345 apiece, which brings a total of $36,648. This is a budgeted item, and I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7J, consider approval to purchase one tractor with sidearm mower utilizing the Sourcewell purchasing contract. Mr. Mayo?
Thank you, Mayor, council. We'd like to purchase a, purchase a four-wheel-drive tractor with sidearm mower from the Sourcewell purchasing contract. The vendor is CMI Equipment Sales Incorporated. Purchase price is $111,173. This is also a budgeted item, and I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7K, consider approval to purchase bulk de-icing salt utilizing the statewide contract 507 ID 66848. Mr. Mayo?
Thank you, Mayor, council. We'd like to purchase both the icing salt from the statewide contract. This, the vendor is Morton Salt. We reserve the purchase for 150 tons at the unit price of $113.78 per ton. It brings the total to $51,201. But this is also a budgeted item, and I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7L, consider approval of repair of 2021 Mack frontload sanitation truck. Mr. Mayo?
Thank you, Mayor, council. We had an accident with our 2021 Mack frontload sanitation truck damaging one of the large lift arms. The truck actually had to be sent out to municipal, municipal equipment in Louisville, Kentucky for repairs. The total cost was $37,598, which is actually $755 in their initial estimate. We turned this into our insurance and received a check back for $21,794.15, resulting in a cost of $15,803.95 for repair of this 2021 truck. We're still working with the insurance company to get some additional reimbursement for the, for the repairs, and I respectfully request your approval for repairs of the truck.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. 7M, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Tennessee Department of Safety and Homeland Security for Highway Safety Grants. Mr. Evans. Pete Evans. And actually, nope, not.
Actually, no. These are the THSO grants, which we generally receive every year. There are three grants: the SAD grant for $25,000, the Network Coordinator Grant for $20,000, and the Alcohol DUI Grant for just a penny over $45,000. The grant began, the grant period began October 1st, and will run through September 30th of 2023. There is no match, and they fund the training, overtime, and equipment for activities that fall under these grants, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion is seconded. Any discussion? I want to know why the grant is 45,001 cents. Someone could, yeah, that was interesting.
That was interesting.
That is interesting. Yes, that one cent, we will use it well.
Yep.
Thank you. Motion is seconded. Any more discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7N, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an engineering service agreement for various substation projects. Mr. Haney?
Mayor and council members, we've identified various substation projects for this coming year, and this agreement would provide engineering services for those projects. We have negotiated not-to-exceed an amount of $55,000 with Tom Barnes consultant, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7O, consider awarding bid for Can Creek Substation Power Circuit Switcher. Mr. Haney?
Mayor and council members, we received bids for a 161 KV switcher for our Can Creek project. The bids were evaluated by one of our engineer consultants, with Southern State's being the best evaluated bid for $72,395 with a 38 to 40-week delivery, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7P, consider rescinding 71521 motion to purchase one crew cab 4x4 flatbread utilizing the statewide contract number 209. Mr. Haney?
Mayor and council members, on 715 of 2021, council approved the purchase of a crew cab 4x4 for the electric department. The dealership was unable to fill this order, and I'm asking you to rescind the motion to purchase this unit.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7Q, consider awarding bids for vehicles utilizing the statewide bid contract number 209. Mr. Haney?
Mayor and council members, we are asking to purchase four vehicles from state bid contract. One three-quarter ton 4x4 for the electric department for $49,333. One three-quarter ton truck 4x4 with a service body for the gas department for $60,237, and two half-ton 4x2 pickup trucks for leisure services for $31,315. These are budgeted units, and I would request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All vote.
Vote's correct. I V S motion carries.
Thank you. 7R, consider on first reading ordinance 022-1024, amending Title 18, Chapter 2 of the Cookeville Municipal Code. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, members of the council, this ordinance implements capacity fees as well as increases the sewer connection or tap fee. The capacity fee is something that we've been looking at for years. We're trying to get the developer to pay for the increase that's for capacity both at the plant and in the collection system to, to handle that capacity. We currently have basins in our system that we don't have any remaining capacity that we can't allow new developments in these. Basically, we're under moratorium in some basins. We, we do have a way to get credits and for repairs that we do and able to tie on some small things. But anyway, what we've looked at is this is a way to spread the cost out, because like if we need an improvement in a basin, one developer can't afford to do it all most of the time. So this allows us to collect money from future lots is when they develop. This, a lot of communities are doing this now, and what this ordinance proposes is a $1,000 per lot pre-aided, as well as a $1,000 capacity fee for any apartment that gets connected to our system. It's basically, you know, they're reserving the capacity in that collection system and at the plant. This, this chart here, which is hoping to show up just a little better, in the middle column, it shows the current tap fees for different units. The one at the top is just a normal house. Currently, we charge a $1,000 tap fee. The proposed tap fee would be $2,200, and then that last column is, is the capacity fee. The capacity fee, as I was discussing, would be $1,000 per lot for each subdivided lot. So this also, the tap fee, we're going to own the developer's lot. Right now, we're charging $50 a lot, and we're going to $1,000 a lot on those. Normally... The other thing I want to point out on the capacity fees, should point out there is on the industrial facilities, what we're trying to do is look at the amount of water that they use in the industrial process and get an equivalent to a house. So whatever they're using, we divide that by the normal flow for a house, and then they would be charging a capacity fee based on that. So I'd be willing to take any questions, but I recommend approval of this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Just a couple things. One, I want to just say thanks to Barry in the, in the planning department. They were, they're real good to consult. I'm a builder, and they, they brought up, they had a group, they had an invitation of builders and developers come in, and we were part of this, and they took what we said and, and, and took it in consideration as they did this, and I, I appreciate that. Second, you and I had talked a little bit about when this, what's the moment in time that, for folks in flux right now, developers who have already kind of put deals in motion on yesterday's math, we loosely talked about maybe at the preliminary plat or at preconstruction or what's, so that folks have an understanding of what their timeline is between now and, you know, they, they've already struck their deal, what, what are they looking at?
Okay, because basically, everything sort of kicks in January the first, but if, if somebody, a development is in the process, if it's a large development and they've had the preconstruction conference to where they've started their improvements, they're, they do not have to pay the capacity fee.
Mayor, I think we need a second before you do any discussion.
I'm so sorry.
You're fine. I was letting, you had questions?
Sorry. I was between the, sorry.
Is there a motion? Yeah, is there a second?
I'll second that for you.
And now, yeah, we can have our, now we can have further discussion. Yes, continue.
Yeah, so that's, that's the big thing on the, on when it would sort of take effect on the development, if it's gone to that far.
What's the lag between, maybe Jonathan can answer, typically between preliminary plat approval and preconstruction, and just, I'd hate for somebody to get caught in that window.
Well, that depends on when you have your engineering prepared, right? So you don't take something to preconstruction, you may get a preliminary approval for a development, but the preconstruction meeting occurs after all the civil engineering sets have been prepared and submitted to the codes department and, you know, a meeting scheduled. Maybe that would say, have a meeting to hold up, hold a meeting for the civil site reviews.
Is it at all possible to consider tying it to the preliminary plat approval rather than preconstruction? It's because developers are pot committed by the time they've submitted that. I mean, a lot of times, they own the property, they, you know, they've lined up financing, and this, this is material, and that's the only thing that has been considered.
To be, to be the date that they, they don't have to pay.
Construction, just, you know, if they've gotten a preliminary plat, and maybe, maybe you limit the extensions, you know, you just can't dribble it on forever, but, but it just seems like that was more of a finite moment in time, where you're going to get people coming in with, with plans that maybe are half baked or, or whatever, just to beat that deadline, and there may not be a lot in the hopper, so you know more than I do about that. I just felt like that preliminary plat date was a hard, fast date.
Yeah, how would that be treated if you changed your plans? I mean, so if you came in with some plans, made it through preliminary, then vastly changed your plans, would you not, after that date, you know?
Typically, for, for planning regulations, right, you can't change, you know, once you have preliminary plat approval, you know, you're actually, you have vested rights, and we can't change requirements for, you know, up to ten years, fifteen years, and if you have a development approved, regardless of the plat even expiring. The state law was amended a few years ago that I have protections for developers for vested rights. So when you have a plat approved, you know, that's as far as the planning regulations go. I would defer to Barry or Mr. Rager for any, any concerns with setting it at preliminary plat, because it would be, the fees would be outside of the purview of planning law.
And I think there'd be a lot of people rush in to do a preliminary plat as well, but I think the council could amend the opposed ordinance as it sees fit. How would that affect us by January first? I mean, is there projects in the pipeline that, that affects? Is there, is there a dollar figure associated with that, that the city will miss out on revenue, you know, by, by not enacting it on January first or delaying that? Is there, is there projects that that would affect?
We got several active projects right now. I mean, we didn't have anything new submitted for preliminary, right? At this point, we've got, you know, several requests to rezone that are being looked at. You know, we do have a few RAO developments that are currently in process as well, that will have a preliminary plat that probably wouldn't get to that point till after the date, so, you know, until after January first, just following our normal schedule, you know, public hearings and what we're required to do by state law. So, and it would have some impacts there.
I don't know if it's what he's saying or not, but it just occurred, I mean, sixty days is just such a brief window of time for folks who are going out and borrowing money to buy property right now, just cannot get all that stuff together. It's impactful to them. Maybe push the date back and make it pretty calm. I'm just trying to keep, not create hardship for those folks, because that, that's a really brief window of time.
Dan, can we, can we have something in here that lets us work out the details of this?
I think you need to pick a definite day if you want to make it ninety days instead of sixty, or, or seventy five days instead of sixty, or even a hundred and twenty. But I think at some point in time, you're going to have to pick a definite day to when this becomes effective. You can't, you can't have a moving target. People should be a whole lot better planned when they exactly know what the deadlines are than if they, if they are in a fog. So I think you definitely need to pick a definite plan as to when any ordinance is effective, and then none of them were effective in the fourteen days after the second reading. So, so really, it's not sixty days, it's could end up being thirty days, time you count the second reading for this one, and then wait fourteen days. You're really looking at an even shorter period of time for, as far as an effective date is of the statute would be, or the ordinance would be concerned. That's what I'm saying.
So we're choosing Jan, but we're choosing January first.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's what's in here right now. Of course, that could be amended, but that's up to you guys.
I mean, isn't, isn't at any point in time, somebody's going to get caught in the window? I mean, you could potentially extend it and extend it.
There are, but you, I think this is notice. You know, this lets them know, hey, this is coming, and you could say ninety days, a hundred and twenty or something like that.
And I don't know that the date of when it starts is as important as just that we get it started, get it underway, get the notice out there.
There's always going to be people that can't meet the deadline or just under the deadline, and give me five more days or something like that.
Just March one. In an ordinance, it's going to be hard to move it. Right. What about, what about, what if we just, James has a good idea, what if we just make it March one, get it in by then, or, you know, no precon, no, no nebulous preconstruction date or anything, just in by then and?
But like I say, I think the important thing is just get it in the pipeline, and so.
That gets people in town. People who have just closed on property, like, right now, I mean, get their engineering done and get all that in, you know, they, they make those decisions based on old, old fee structures. That would be, that'd be tough for them to get to something with holidays or anything else by Christmas, but I think March one is enough of a window.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any problem with that, Joe, to amend that.
So do we need to amend the ordinance?
You need to make, make a.
Make a motion to amend.
And then a second, then vote on the amendment, then vote on the ordinance as amended.
Sure. Is there any further discussion? So is there a motion to amend the ordinance for a start date of March first, twenty twenty three?
Absolutely. Second.
Okay, motion is seconded. Any discussion on that? So we're going to vote on the amendment. All vote.
All votes correct. I guess motion carries.
Some motion carries on that. Now, we're going to need a motion on the amended ordinance to begin March first, twenty twenty three. Is that correct, Dan?
Yeah, motion as amended.
Motion as amended, thank you. So motion as amended.
Could, could I, just get one clarification? Is, was that amendment just on the capacity fee, or is that on the tap fee, or is it? I didn't.
For the, for the whole ordinance.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Is that?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify.
Right now, it's the, March first is the deadline for whatever time sensitive any ordinance.
So is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any further discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. I guess motion carries.
Thank you. Seven S, consider authorizing.
Let me say one more. Now, if you look back, can you see any problems? It has to come back for second reading, and you can bring that up at the second reading if, if you need to adjust that a little bit on some of these things.
No, I just wanted to be clear, so, so the minutes would be like that.
But it has to come back for a second reading.
Okay.
Thank you. Seven S, consider authorizing the city manager to execute an engineering contract for the sewer system master plan update, Mr. Turner.
The sewer system master plan is basically sort of a roadmap of how to sewer the unsewered areas of the city, as well as how to convey that wastewater to the treatment plant and correct any bottlenecks that's discovered. This contract is with Gresham Smith. It's not to exceed two hundred and thirty three thousand and a hundred and eight dollars. Sixty six thousand of this is to do flow monitoring, and sixty nine thousand of it's to do modeling. Basically, they'll gather, put flow monitors in, and they already have a model of our sewer system, but they'll do some more corrections to that and look at all the different areas. And this is a three hundred day contract, and, yeah, so I recommend approval for this.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. I guess motion carries.
Thank you. Seventy, consider authorizing the city manager to execute an engineering contract for the design of Mindlet Creek Road Waterline Improvements Project. Mr. Turner.
This area is along Mindlet Creek Road. This is part of the area that we acquired from Double Springs Utility District. Currently has a six inch asbestos cement water line. Been there for years and doesn't really provide fire protection for some of the areas. This contract is for forty thousand dollars, plant and engineering, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. I guess motion carries.
Thank you. Excuse me. Seven U, consider awarding a bid for thirty inch split sleeve repair coupling. Mr. Turner.
This is an inventory item that we recently used and need to replace. Got two bids. Low bid is eleven thousand eight hundred and ninety eight dollars for Fortline, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. I guess motion carries.
Thank you. Excuse me. Seven U, consider awarding a bid for thirty inch split sleeve repair coupling. Mr. Turner.
This is an inventory item that we recently used and need to replace. Got two bids. Low bid is eleven thousand eight hundred and ninety eight dollars for Fortline, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. I guess motion carries.
Thank you. Seven V, consider awarding bid for the twenty twenty two low pressure sewer system project, Shagrad Road, Dry Valley Road, and Contraband Road. Mr. Turner.
Well, this project provides sewer, as you said there, to Dry Valley Road, Shagrad Road, Contraband Road, and the, we only received one bid on this project. It was three hundred and ninety eight thousand nine hundred and seventy six dollars, and we are working on a, Mr. Cooper's doing his development on the other, and he's agreed to, verbally agreed to contribute forty five thousand towards this project. Working on getting that squared up and writing, but I recommend your approval on this.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion there?
Just one bidder.
Times are hard on bidding. I mean, it's just, I'm hearing a lot of places, it's not getting any bids on some projects.
It's going to get worse, all the money heading to this stuff, isn't it?
But what, what we are hearing.
How many feet was it?
I'm sorry, Chad, I don't have it in this paper with me.
He used to lay it for two dollars a foot, and I'm sure it's higher than that now.
Yeah.
And there is some discussion that if the, there are some contingencies that the zone doesn't happen, things like that, this was a sewer plan that was already, we're already planning to extend sewer out to this area.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. I guess motion carries.
Thank you. That consider, that is the end of our agenda portion of the meeting. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the council on non-agenda items? Yep, yeah, right over there. Let's take your name.
Good evening, council. My name is Andy Burgess, and I'm a member of the Middle Tennessee Alliance of InfraGuard. InfraGuard is a unique partnership between the FBI and individuals in the private sector for the protection of U.S. critical and American infrastructure and the American people. October is the CISA, which is the Cybersecurity Infrastructure Security Agency, kicked off Cybersecurity Awareness Month. This is following a proclamation by the White House designating October as a time for the public and private sectors to work together to continue raising awareness about the importance of cybersecurity and to equip the American people with the resources needed to be safer and more secure online. Throughout October, CISA, in partnership with the National Cybersecurity Alliance, will focus on what it means to be see yourself in cyber, by highlighting the actions that all Americans can take to raise the baseline for cybersecurity across the country. There's a lot of information on cisa.gov, that's C-I-S-A dot G-O-B, a lot of information about cyber violence, and also October being Domestic Violence Awareness Month. There's a huge tie-in for that. What I'd like to ask the city to do is to consider reaching out to the regional liaison, Clint Walker, to request a security assessment that's at no cost to the city, that is federally funded, and a Department of Homeland Security Protective Security Advisor, which they call DHS, a PSAs, would assist the city in a security survey and give recommendations on not only how to make more infrastructure that's cyber related secure, but also all infrastructure, because leading into November is the Infrastructure Security Awareness Month. So we, we have lots to do. What I'd like to ask the city to do is to consider reaching out to the regional liaison, Clint Walker, to request a security assessment that's at no cost to the city, that is federally funded, and a Department of Homeland Security Protective Security Advisor, which they call DHS, a PSAs, would assist the city in a security survey and give recommendations on not only how to make more infrastructure that's cyber-related secure, but also all infrastructure, because leading into November is the Infrastructure Security Awareness Month. So we, we have lots to do. There's also lots of programs out there that are federally funded that are free to the city at no cost to the taxpayers. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for that recommendation. I appreciate that. Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, my name's Mark Tribble. I'm an attorney here in town and represent some folks that are residents of this city out on Buck Mountain Road. One of your contracts that you just approved under item V, I had concerns that I wanted to bring to the council's attention. There is a zoning request that's just been filed relating to a twenty-five-acre parcel at the end of the city limits that this sewer contract conveniently didn't even mention addresses an extension on Buck Mountain Road for your understanding. The current zoning of that property is based in your 2030 plan as having a future for less than two houses for every two acres out there. That's in your adopted plan, and the purported zoning change ignores that and requests what's projected to be eighty units to be placed on twenty-five acres out there. What has happened is you've just approved a contract that makes it possible for that without giving notice to all the people along Buck Mountain Road that you just approved a sewer expansion project that isn't really servicing anything that's authorized under the zoning ordinance right now. So your staff has put this cart before the horse, and we now have a contract with some developer saying, yeah, I'll pitch in. But they didn't get a written agreement to pitch in. We don't know how much that's gonna be. Your 2030 plan expressly contains a provision that when we increase density and approve subdivisions, we're gonna ask for infrastructure improvements to be paid for by those developers for the city not to bear that. Your agreement to this contract just does the opposite. It hopes this developer now, with your sewer in the ground and a tap ready for him to hook up to, is gonna be good-natured enough to pay you some money for doing that for him, when you had an opportunity to negotiate with that with him and secure a financial benefit to the city prior to going to these lengths. It's, it's unfortunately, I did not learn about this contract till I was at your Planning Commission Work Session this afternoon, when your planning staff mentioned that approval of this contract was already bid and being approved today. So we're in a situation where I'm not sure the council can do anything about that, but it's just discouraging that your staff worked around that issue in such a way that makes rezoning less transparent for our community. Thank you for your time today.
Any further comments? Oh, yes.
My name is Donnie Meadows. This proposed development is going directly in front of my house. I was asked recently to sign a right-of-way easement for the sewer line to come out through in front of my property there. I never questioned it a minute. I signed it and sent it back in as proposed. Nobody ever said anything else about you rezoning the property right across in front of my street, but in eighty, eighty, single-family homes. Now, this property sits above the property that the house I've lived in. See, I've owned that property since nineteen eighty-four. I've lived there since nineteen eighty-eight. When I was asked my opinion about joining, be brought into the city limits, the, I said, I'd love to be in the city. I like how the protections, the city limits and the, and the zoning and the amenities and all the stuff that goes along with that. I thought that would help protect me against things like this. Now, some of y'all know me. I've done developments all over Tennessee and East Tennessee and a lot of different places. We've developed over three thousand residential lots in my career. This proposal, as I see it over there right now, is on a sloping piece of property. And but that kind of density on that kind of property is, it's not gonna be effective. It, it will not work. They're gonna have to be somebody that's gonna have to show me how that's possible to make it work. Now, this might be the inappropriate time to discuss this. It may be where I've been down the road. But I really am upset that you asked me to sign an easement for right-of-way for sewer that were going down through there without letting me know I was signing an easement for a subdivision going right in front of my house. Now, I developed Copper Springs over on Spring Street. I spent over fifteen million dollars putting that in. Ninety home, ninety-seven houses and about thirty thousand square foot of commercial space. The city never offered to help me put sewer in over there. I had to, I even had to run the sewer up to the street to give the sewer, give access to the, to the city there. I own property across the street from that, where that sewer is. They recently asked me to donate the property, an easement there, to put the sewer in over there. I never questioned it. I did it, okay? Now, you're bringing in this development right across in front of my house, where I've been there since nineteen eighty-eight, and you're gonna pay, you're gonna pay for that guy to run the sewer down through there? What, what was wrong with me? Why didn't you help me? You know, you're going in over there and you've gone in over there with, this property joins the county. I got a list of property owners that joined this property. The smallest tract of property that joins this property is four and a half acres. All the property, there's no property out there that, that joins this property that has less, that has owned the property less than twenty years.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. And no, we will, we set a date today for the public hearing meeting to discuss this zoning. So there will be an opportunity for people to talk. Oh, no, sorry. That was not.
Is that correct, John? This Monday night, let's go to the planning.
That's correct.
Did you give us some details on that?
So there'll be, yeah.
This was taken for study by the planning commission last month to rezone twenty-five acres on Buck Mountain Road from RS twenty, single-family residential to RS ten, single-family residential.
And there'll be opportunity at that meeting to discuss.
Actually, jump around our decision today, and everyone in the area has been properly noticed about the public hearing.
Mr. Meadows has a very good point about signing an easement under the guise of a sewer enhancement without knowing a developer was involved.
I want to sign it.
Before we adjourn, I do wanna. Dan, is there an opportunity to postpone that to get some more information since we haven't adjourned?
If you haven't adjourned, you can rescind your, you can rescind, you can, you can do anything you want to do.
Yes. So we've got some adjourn, go back and postpone that item to try to understand that.
What are we talking about?
Just this item.
Yeah. What was the timing of everything?
Well, these are good points, mate.
Yeah, we were gonna extend sewer down Buck Mountain Road to, and then to get Drive Valley Road was our, our initial project when we were approached by Mr. Cooper to go on out there. At that time, there was no, no discussion about rezoning. He presented, it's been probably eighteen, I'm not good with time, eighteen, ten years ago was to do a subdivision out there. Some of you may remember that. So we felt like he was trying to do basically what he was trying to do back then. And so it made sense to just go ahead and include that in our project, you know, defer that cost to him, you know, to get that out there. So, you know, nobody else in there that were running sewer in this project is, is getting rezoned. We didn't know at that time that he was getting rezoned, but I mean, we're, we are trying to sewer the residents of the city.
True required to do under the plan of services for those areas that we've annexed. And it is an area we've annexed. We're ultimately obligated at some point, depending on the plan of services for the day, to get sewer to these areas.
We can get somebody to chip in and help us. We, we sure appreciate it anytime we can get it.
Is there other areas in the community that makes sewer worse than what Buck Mountain Road does in that particular area? I don't, I don't know. But were you running through there? I don't know about the eight or nine hundred feet of it. And, and I'm not interested, sir. I don't need sewer. I got separate systems. And I'm not interested in developing my, where I live. I would think there would be some, somewhere else in the community that might need, have, have the need for sewer services worse than that little bit of arm there, right there in front of my house. I don't think, I don't think you can sell sewer tap one going down that road, any property owner down that road as of right now.
I don't know about Buck Mountain on, on Dry Valley. I know we can. But, but like I said, we're, we're just trying to, anybody that comes up with a good deal, just like we talked shared with you before. We, we try to, we try to do to get the rest of the city sewer.
I'm normally not on this side of the fence.
So right now, while we have the discussion, do we need, do you want to rescind this?
I'm looking, what do you do with item, what is it? V?
Need to make a motion.
Motion or revisit item V?
Well, it's been passed.
So we just got to do an action somewhere.
You have to make a motion more than just to revisit it. I mean, it's been visited.
Okay.
Right now.
So we had to rescind the vote and then postpone.
Right now, you approved to make the contract, but that had, the contract hadn't been signed yet. It's not effective. So if you wanna do something, now's the time to do it.
Yeah, I would, I would make a motion to rescind the vote on item B and postpone it until the next meeting. It's not gonna affect parking truck. That's the only question.
You have to have a motion of the second.
Right now, is there any further discussion on rescinding this much, rescinding this?
Just to, I mean, notices to proceed, materials, I mean, just. And I think the discussion's then evolves into something like, hey, do we want to sewer that area? It's where this is pivoting, and we may have to have that. Just getting that discussion on the table.
Point out that the bid that was approved is more than just this area.
Right.
Other, other areas in the city that I'm assuming need sewer, want sewer. Very big on that. I don't know how much we think this is, but I know Contraband, you've got some issues there. I don't know what else on Shagrag.
Can you break them out?
Okay, carve that out and then.
A bigger issue is how, how, how long is your bid open?
Yeah.
We could perhaps extend the bid. It's sixty days is what, sixty days is our normal. This has been opened a little while. Let me find the bid table.
Are we in the discussion portion?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're discussing.
September the sixth. So we're, we're approaching that sixty days, because we were doing a little more negotiating before we awarded. But, but the contractor's been good to work with on other jobs, so he would possibly extend his bid.
How long, technically, how long is the bid open?
I mean, November the sixth.
November the sixth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah. So there'll be another meeting before. Probably accept this bid.
Can we carve out, drive it out? Can we carve out that motion?
I don't know if the bid allows that.
So it does sound like we've got enough time to, to.
Review this.
To, yeah, rescind it, payable it.
Right now, the motion is to rescind. Accepting that bid, and right now, that's the motion in the second. That's what it is.
Okay, but it sounds like.
The rescension.
Yeah.
And we have to move forward with postponement.
Okay. And have that discussion.
We're being limbo.
Well, you rescind it.
Rescind it.
Rescind it right now.
And then discuss.
Then you can make a motion to.
Postpone and discuss.
To, to bring it back on November third.
Okay.
Or some other time, but the bid, the bid is good till November the sixth, so you really have to act on it before November the sixth.
We've got to the third.
And I, I would like to tell the council, I mean, this week would postpone consideration of a rezoning of their infrastructure. You know, you, you wouldn't consider a rezoning without sufficient infrastructure to start the development.
That's the tricky admin part of this, is it's, it's discussion. So that's why I was saying, I think the focus is, hey, do we want, and my good friend Donnie and I are always typically on the same side of things. That, hey, I would have been like you, I'd assign the service out there, because it just logically is a, is a good thing. And that, I'm trying to compartmentalize, is this what we're doing here tonight? Without, I know I'm sympathetic to what you're saying, but in the, in the reality of the, in a vacuum, we're just, just proving sewer out there. Not proving a reasonable reason.
Well, would the sewer be different, I guess is the question? If there was a development out there, you know.
No, this came across before.
It would maybe later, but it wouldn't be different.
I mean, would the size of sewer be different?
Yes, I would be the same.
Let, let me, let me say this.
I have not read the contract, but the proposal said the sewer was on Dry Valley Road, not Buck Mountain Road, so.
It's all, I mean, it's all that. It's just our title. To get the dry valley, you gotta go part of Buck Mountain. It's just the title. When you start putting them on the drawings, it gets so big when you list Shagrag, Drive Valley Road, but.
We don't know if you could accept part of the bid and defer part of the bid either, because I haven't seen the contract. So, but right now, the motion is to rescind in the agreement to do the contract, and then it could, you can bring it back.
Yeah, and it's, and it's unit prices.
Ends November the sixth.
I, I was provided a copy of the bid quote specs. They are separate maps in this bid package with separate footage for each segment. So from my perspective, it could be pieced out, and it's gonna be up to your bidder whether or not he wants to resubmit it to a scaled-back project.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it's.
So, all right, so we've got a motion and a second to rescind the vote on the, on the amendment. So is there?
Meeting on the.
On the third. We meet on the third.
Rescind, you rescind the approval of the contract.
The contract, yes.
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Okay. Does, does, does the cost share have to come back to council for approval?
This doesn't have anything to do with the cost share.
I know, but that will be another bite at the apple.
Yes, huh? Yeah, they have to agree.
Yeah, that's an agreement. Yeah, that has to come back too. That's an ordinance.
Okay.
That has to come back. No, no, the cost, the cost share, no, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute. There, there's been no proposal for a contract for a cost share, because he said, didn't even have anything in writing, so that's not getting approved at all.
No, he's saying what it happens to. Yeah.
Has to be approved.
So the cost share is not involved in that.
Cost share has nothing to do with it.
So there is no developer time to this project currently.
Nothing in writing. I mean, he's verbally agreed, but we don't have that contract ready to bring to the council.
So for clarification, the awarding the bid is for sewer out to this area without anything to do with the development, nothing coming in from the developer. This is strictly for the city to provide sewer to this area.
That's what, that's what, right now, the council's approved, and the motion is to rescind that. And the second is to rescind that. I'm just trying to get clarity.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
But it has nothing to do with the cost share. That agreement has not been submitted to the council. That's a side deal that's not even agreed. I'm, I'm trying to see how contingent a rezoning may be on that.
Well, you can't rezone without sewer.
Is his cost share just to extend it from the intersection of Dry Valley and Buck Mountain out?
Yeah, what is, yeah, what you all talk about.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we do, you know.
Okay, so we're getting into the corner of Buck Mountain and Drive Valley?
Yes, we have to come there to go down Drive Valley to get to. Need down there.
Okay, and we decided if we do rescind this, it does not affect the zoning hearing, correct?
I may misunderstood your question there when I heard his answers. What was your question specifically?
Okay, so the, this current Dry Valley portion of this bid is to take the sewer to what point in Dry Valley, and then at what point is the contractor proposing to?
Yeah, what we have in, in the, in the drawings are going out Buck Mountain Road all the way to his property and then going down Dry Valley Road all the way to Booger Swamp down there.
Okay, so you're just going to his property?
But, yes, he, he would be extending, he would be extending past his property. What we, what, what our discussions have been is we get it up to his property. He pays that part from Dry Valley up to his property. He pays to extend it past his property, and then later on, we could do another contract and pick it up at that point and get the remaining portions of the city.
So if I go out and buy some property tomorrow, I, I, I'm upset about this, but.
No, so I think there needs to be more discussion on this issue is what I'm gonna say right now. It sounds like we need more discussion, more information. So I do believe that rescinding this, having more discussion, if we can do that and, and it not be detrimental to anything else that we're doing right now, sounds like it would be in the best interest of everybody. It'll, okay, so it'll postpone the zoning.
Within your timeframe, can you all postpone that?
There is no time brief for rezoning action. We have an application. I mean, we just, you know.
You have to act on it with the.
Satisfaction infrastructure is vital to increasing density rights. If sufficient infrastructure is viable to increase in density, right, so that's, you know, we would, until there was some type of formal plan or something to extend sewer, you know, I would, I wouldn't feel like it would be appropriate to move forward with a rezoning action.
Okay, and post-ponement would just be a month?
Yes.
The developer's not here to tell us that that would be detrimental to them, so I think we've got the motion, the second we discussed. Are we ready to vote?
Basically, it's just two weeks.
Yeah. Yeah, the motion is to, no, first, this is a motion to rescind it, and then we'll have to, yeah, then we'll have to make a motion to postpone. No, wait first, yes. So is there any further discussion? The motion is then seconded to rescind the bid.
Item B, yeah.
Item B, yes. Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all vote. This is the motion to rescind, so voting yes means we want to rescind it.
All votes correct. My yes motion carries.
Thank you. Now we need to make a motion to...
To make a motion to postpone item B until our next council meeting.
On November 3rd.
Reschedule for November 3rd.
Rescheduled. Reschedule that item B, make a motion to reschedule item B for November 3rd, which is our next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all vote. I mean, excuse me, any further discussion on that? We will be discussing, we will get more information, figure out what's going on, get more information for us, for those involved, and have, and then discuss it on November 3rd.
Try to understand the relationship there.
Sound good? Any discussion from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. My yes motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
You're welcome, yeah. Any other comments from the council or the... Yeah, this is here, okay? Any comments from the council? Okay, meeting is adjourned.